Let us pray. Wonderful Father, you are the perfect image of what a father should be, leading us with love, grace, generosity, and faithfulness, all things fathers should strive to emulate. So on this day after Father's Day, we thank you and we ask that you bless all the fathers in our lives, whether by blood or by circumstances. We welcome you into this room to be with us, guiding us as we do the work of the city. We pray for other communities that are struggling and thank you for how you have blessed Richwood. Please be with our residents and our leaders, our first responders and our military. Surround all in your love and protection and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag.
Pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, indivisible.
He's coming. Okay. Move it down a little bit. Yeah, alright, alright. Very good.
I did.
Prayer, Tricia, thank you very much.
As of now, we only have one council member missing.
Well, two, but one is in route.
Oh.
Chief Public Comments, thank you very much. I like that haircut, you go get me one. No public comments. Okay. We'll move on to Employee Service Award. A is Chuck.
Which works?
Public Works, 10 years. And then the second one, we can skip, I guess.
Yeah. Sorry, Yona.
The second one goes out to Ms. Ditto for five years of excellent service to the city of Richwood, so thank you very much. Can you get a picture?
I'll give this to Cliff, this isn't to Chuck.
Yeah, thanks.
Hello, Jeremy.
He's threatening to retire, I don't think he'll...
Is Elizabeth? No. I don't see any woman.
Here's your beautiful solid gold pin.
Thank you.
You could trade it in a pawn shop.
I told her not to, she couldn't.
Alright.
Come on.
Oh.
Why do you always do it in front of masks?
Go to your left a little bit.
Thank you.
It says pictures here.
It does not. Thank you.
Check again. Thank you very much. Alright. We will reflect that Jeremy is here. So Mr. Stahlberg is the only one absent today. Moving on to Consent Agenda. A Budget Report, April 2025. Let me read them all. Okay, B, Approved Resolution 25-R-97, Appointing Ms. Elizabeth Cooper as Richwood Representative for the Brazesport Water Authority, and C, Approval of Minutes from Regular Meeting Held May 13, 2025.
I can motion to approve the consent agenda.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion carries. Okay, moving on to Fiscal Year 2026 Budget Workshop. A, Presentation and Discussion of Fiscal Year 2026 Proposed Budget.
I don't know how Cliff feels now up here. Okay, everybody, pardon if I lose my voice, I'm struggling mildly with it. What we're going to talk about is a little bit about our financial analysts for '25-'26, so this covering budget season. One of the things we're going to talk about is, and things that are going to impact our budget, and these change daily, so we don't have a real good forecast on it, but we do have some information. So 5% for the GSP, 1.9%, 1.6, 1.9% growth in employment. The challenges that we face are potential disruption to higher traffic tariffs, particularly affecting leading export state. Population is projected to rise to 3.2% roughly in the state. The state is facing a budget surplus, so this, with a population of 4761, has a blue collar economy with 38.8% of its workforce in occupations like construction compared to the industries tied to regional economic activity such as energy, manufacturing, and Houston and Visory County, indicating relative affluence to the, despite this economic development or diversity, economic trend, employment trends again count for 16% and 10% for professional occupations respectively, with growth and potential for growth in sector. The 2025 job forecast, 34,000, is roughly compared with a trend of 57,000, reflects caution due to terrorist benefits sustained from energy sector growth, trade risks, again tariffs, states $194.6 billion general purpose spending for '26-'27, bolstered by 23.76. Again, our labor and tariffs, labor market. Lastly, the economic outlook for Richwood for '25-'26 is cautiously optimistic, aligning with municipality is likely experienced stable but modest economic activity driven by its blue collar. That tells us that we're going to, we're probably going to again stick with our budgeting as I have become a moldy guy. I would not do anything strange, unusual. I don't think we're as in dire economics, moderate growth with a lot of geopolitical interference, and nobody can predict that. So between the time I did this, so...
I was going to see if you wanted me to read for you next time.
From here?
Come have a seat.
I have a voice.
There we go.
So the beginning of my presentation is the same as I had last year, and so I am going to kind of skim over it really quick. All of, as a former accounting student, the only thing worse than sitting through an accounting class is having to hear it twice. So I'm not going to bore you completely. It's just service, not profit. The only difference between that philosophy, we try to cover expenses and plan for the future. Our general fund, next one. Our general fund is our main fund for the maintenance and operation of the city. Our plant pays for all the debt and a reserve for growth. Next one. We have several different kinds of funds, I'm not going to bore you with all of them. That means we can spend it on what we deem we want to spend it on. If it's assigned, committed, restricted, or not spend it for, if it's non-spendable, it's like our plant, we can't spend that. But if it's restricted, committed, or assigned, it has a specific purpose. Next one. Covers all the maintenance and operation of the city. We have a replacement fund, which we've been building up over the last five years to plan for future, putting 10% aside every year to build that, and we are going to talk about that in a little bit. We have two separate funds, court, security, and technology funds. Kirsten, as soon as I figure out how. That way they can be used for security or technology, we don't have to have separate... Accumulate money for street sidewalks and drainage, so that fund is a restricted fund. So general obligation fund, INS fund, it pays the debt that is not paid by the enterprise fund. And then we have a grant fund, which our enterprise fund has our water and sewer fund, which does the operation of our utility. It also pays the debt, I started since I've been here, to build up funds to fix whatever INI is. That's not my department to know what that is. And then we have a utility capital improvement fund, where we are putting money in to build for future capital improvements. That's where we have a certain budgeted amount that goes in there, and then that's also where our impact fees go. Years ago, before I came, it was made CCPD, so it accumulates in there, and they have a board that determines our budget. And then we have the beautification fund, which is the KRV fund. The next fund, or the next slide, this is our fund balances, and I just like to be really transparent with council, show you where we are. Fund balance is adjusted at the end of every year, when the year is left, adds to fund balance. If there's nothing left and it's a negative, it takes away from fund balance. So this is our fund balances. GFOA, which is the governmental financial... ...of our general fund expenditures put away in reserve, kind of our rainy day fund. Image and things that we should have, 120 to 180 days. We are above that. Any questions on our fund balances? The next slide. Our contingency fund, we had just over a million dollars, no, just under a million, 840 in there, and we had some interest. So we had a little over a million in there when barrel hit. Just the debris management was over 900,000 that we had to pay at the time. So it came out of contingent and hope that it got reimbursed. We then finally got the money last week, week before, that went right back, was transferred out of contingency to pay for the debris. The city general fund absorbed everything else of our costs, which was a pretty minor storm, so we could have easily spent everything. We finally did get reimbursement almost a year later, 10 months later, year 325 that went in there and interest revenue that went in. So we're back up as of today unofficially, because fund balance is adjusted at the end of the year, we have 1500, 1.5 million in. It can be gone like that, so I just wanted to address that. That is just... It's just under council's guidance and decision what it's spent on. So, okay. Any questions on contingency balance? This was set up to build reserves for equipment and vehicles for the city. When I came, the balance was pretty close to zero. I've been funding it, not adequately, but we have been funding it over the last five years. The reds show some spending, I forget what that was, but the 45 is canceled out by a 45 plus, so. Anyway, so that's what's been put in, you can see the interest there, which is unallocated. It's not specifically for any one of the three categories, so we could, or replacement, I mean. Any questions? Okay. The one with property values?
Alright, so next one, you want me to go to that?
Yeah, I can take my page, sure. This is fiscal year '26. I just like you guys to see where we are. So the first column, fiscal year '26, the second column is interest payments, third column then is the total of those two, and the last column is the balance. We will still have debt of 7.8 million. The debt fund is paid by property tax, so there is a set, that amount is set that we have to take in for property tax, so the county will calculate for us our debt rate, and then the difference between our debt rate and whatever tax rate we set is for our expenditures that are paid out of our revenues for water, sewer, and garbage.
What is Lake Jackson City Hall though?
That was in 2009, this building was redone.
Oh, for this, okay.
Yeah.
It's just the bank of Lake Jackson, not Lake Jackson City Hall.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, it's just to pay for the remodel here.
Yeah.
I can see where that would be. I just see it all the time. That was what it was called.
Okay.
But no, it's a loan we have out with First National Bank, and we pay four times a year. So good news on the debt side. The 500,000, Series 2004, we will make the last payment this current fiscal year, so those were both out of the enterprise fund. So it's nice to get some debt off of there. Any questions on that? Okay. So I went to a meeting at the campus, a very preliminary estimate of what our taxable values would be, and then they gave us a worksheet to show us what that would be based on the same tax rate we have assessed right now. So our appraised values are 628-plus million. We have a homestead cap that comes off, and then we have the 23.231, which is also called circuit breaker, that's kind of 9 million. Then we have state exemptions of 29 million that comes off, and then we have local exemptions that were voted on and approved by council that take off a total of 15 million. The Freeport exemption is the only one that was not approved since I bid on this, but it's something to do with inventory that is temporarily on the site, they don't pay tax on it.
Not Freeport.
So like material and transit.
Okay.
So our net taxable value is 564 million plus. It's about 43 million above last year's certified values. Of that, a little over 8 million is new additions or improvements, or six points tax rate of .540587 for $100 of assessed value. We will see a, the levy for just MNO would be 2.5 million. This year it was projected to be 2.3 million. So it's a little time, it's a little bit higher, it's about 150,000 higher, figure I told you was required by the payments we have to make out of our debt fund. Any questions on that? So you're probably thinking, why am I going over all this when this is supposed to be a budget workshop? But we are really early in the process for budgeting, and so I just want, so in our general fund, we're predicting, I put 145 on this screen, additional ad valorem tax will be coming in. Our sales tax will be, I'm projecting, and this, we're about that much ahead, we're about 100,000, not 180,000, ahead of our projection for this current fiscal year. And then other revenues such as court and franchise tax and all those other smaller revenues, I'm looking at an increase maybe of 35,000. So we may have about 245,000 of additional revenue. What we have talked about within our budget meetings is giving payroll increase for all staff of 4%. This is based on SSI over the years, we try to keep up with that. Every other year, the employees have opportunity for merit increases up to 3%, I think. And then I met with our insurance agent last week. The only figure he could tell me was he expects our workers' comp to go up about 10%. He said across the board, workers' comp has dropped this year, but we have some serious claims.
Yep.
So he's expecting ours to go up 10%. That is not carved in stone. Otherwise, he thinks insurance rates should be similar, but again...
Compensation benefits? What's that maximum amount of time?
Kirsten's going to ask that.
So it, I think it's, it could be up to 10 years of benefits after the fact.
It should be noted that we got our property values back for assessment for insurance, and those are, those are down about 13%.
Give you guys any concrete numbers or projections at this point until we see the numbers in July. They have to, 60 days out is the earliest they can get rates. That's for our property insurance as well as our health insurance. So we don't have any, for city maintenance to get a new mower and a new truck.
Let's go ahead and skip this section, those aren't coming in this year.
Again, whether this is paid for out of general fund or whether it comes out of replacement fund will be determined when we have former numbers on revenues and expenditures. He's going to transfer some money in to help cover overtime costs of 15,000, and then transfers to the contingency fund and the reserves, meaning numbers. And then there is, there has been some talk with the fire department about an incentive for paper call. We'll do on that if we do. Any questions?
I'm interested in that paper call. I'd like to know more whenever y'all get more information.
Yeah, is the discussion going to be part of the additional budget workshops?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you guys know.
So we can understand what that means and...
There's a lot of... Either through payroll or 1099-ing them, that it crosses all the Ts and...
Is there any risk of that being employment versus, so there's insurance risk there?
Yeah, so we have to cross all the Ts and dot all the Is before this year, but I just wanted to mention it.
Okay.
This is a, this is a rough, rough vision that we're going to have for kind of the outline going in. We've done a lot of work, we've got all our departments met, and then we reduce down to what we have to, the supplementals we have, which are, we'll put everything down, we'll see more or less what exactly will be left over, we'll go from there.
Okay. Specifically for the power department, this is something I've been asking for for two years and I've yet to get it, but it would be really helpful to have a ledger for transactions in, outgoing and incoming, to understand if the needs are being met, where they may be reallocated, et cetera, especially if we're going to...
We spend on the fire department.
But that's just a, that's just a transfer of funds, correct?
No, we pay most of their bills.
Okay.
They're a department of our general ledger, of our general fund, so we pay the majority of their expenses. They do have things that can be spent at their discretion, I don't have control over that.
Yep.
But I can give you, you know, but what we spend.
Yeah, it would be helpful for that discussion to just understand.
And that to you, meetings, and I've stressed this since I came, is don't ask me, just give me the same as last year, or can you raise it 10%? They bring to me, you know, specifics.
Yeah.
And so when we met with Mark and Matt, took over their budget, I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I know Mark's inheriting this request.
Yes.
This was from his predecessor that I had asked multiple...
So I apologize if I should have gotten that to you, I want you aware.
No, you weren't asked.
But anyway, we do, you know, we meet with them just like any department, and we'll go more into that at our next budget workshop. In the meantime, I can give that to you.
Thank you.
And I haven't really talked to Cliff to ask him why. I don't want to talk to Cliff too much, but currently we have 1,432 metered locations, and a year ago we had 1,454. So instead of seeing growth in metered locations, it's gone down. But even with that, looking at this year, however, with the rate increase, we were hoping more for like five to six, so we're not realizing quite as much revenue as I had hoped as far as increase. There was, like I said, a nominal increase was expected in fiscal year '26. I hate doing rate increases, but I don't know that we can get by without one this year.
We're talking about water right now, right? Okay.
The wastewater treatment plant, we had a budget meeting last week with them. We are, just it for us, all the financials and everything, we met with all of them, and we're responsible for 25% of all expenses, roughly. There's a little bit different on capital, but they're expecting a major repair or replacement next year. They don't have an amount, but probably a quarter of a million at least, that we would be responsible for 25% of.
Is it purely repair or is it expansion?
Repair.
The enterprise fund is, we are paying off that 2004 bond, which is about 45,000 a year. Now some expenditures that are expected to increase by about 10 to 11% in this upcoming budget. Again, the cola increase and the merit increases, the well number five rehab, 70,200. We have a lot of problem with meters not reading, so...
Is it proximity to the base, or what is it, what's the issue?
Yeah, it's coverage.
Okay.
We lose coverage in certain parts of town, and those meters just don't get read. It's quite frustrating. For a certain amount of time, yes, it's covered.
Okay.
Then it just goes away.
Okay.
They can't guarantee it. But the propagation map, I'm sure we're at the limits in some areas.
I would imagine Oakwood is probably like the limit of the coverage, and then with any, any additional interference in between, you're just adding to the degradation of the coverage. Is that fair to say?
Yep.
Okay.
So that's a major expense. Also reconstruction of the list station. We're going to see increased preventative maintenance costs. The city has seen the effects in the past years of not keeping up on preventative maintenance, so we don't want to let that slip. We also now have more to do maintenance on. We have a northwater plant, the ARBA equipment that we got, I think. So did you ever talk to them about how much they were expecting an increase?
No.
Okay. Every year we have a BWA increase, we just don't know what that is yet.
Do we know if that has anything to do with the new reservoir?
Yes.
It does.
Most of it does, yes.
They distribute it amongst the cities who use it, and 85 was supposed to be covered by Dow, is that correct?
That's correct, that's one factor. The MNO costs have also gone up mostly because of chemicals, fuel and stuff like that last year, and we probably will see a small increase because of that and the debt.
Okay. Alright.
So we'll get our price per thousand.
So that being said, we will most likely be bringing you a rate increase for our utilities, but it's imperative that we cover all of our operational costs, all of our debt costs, as well as build for the future, because we know our infrastructure is going to be costly soon. So that being said, that is the enterprise discussion. Any questions?
What are they going to do whenever this fuel, bringing the water to Richwood and stuff?
Yes, possible.
Like direct effect?
Yeah.
Because the fuel's gone down, 100%.
Yeah, yeah, but you have to, there's many factors, and they're looking at a single bottom line. It's not one thing that's going to make the difference.
They have funding.
I think they're like us with our enterprise fund, they have to cover their costs.
They do.
Well, I get it.
And they, they calculate that every year and figure out...
What I'm saying is, I'm over the fact that all these, not, not anybody here, but they continually spill the cost of fuel and the cost of, the cost of fuel's gone down, okay?
spill the cost of fuel and the cost of, the cost of fuel's gone down, okay? I buy hundreds of gallons of fuel. Everything else is kind of going down. Groceries are kind of plateauing, going down a little bit. I do the grocery shopping at my house, so I want it to take equal effect on our residents so we can afford it.
Cliff, the BWA rate for the reservoir and the desal plant and all that, there's an amortization table fixed for that amount. That's a fixed amount they have alone for this, any increase chemicals or new projects or stuff like that. It's not all one. Now, it is possible you'll see a reduction or a narrow amount, but to be honest with you, I don't...
I just want to see some relief for our citizens.
So do I, but that's not, you can bang your hand on it.
Right now, I'd be happy to see a year where we didn't increase.
Yeah.
So...
And they always contend for the worst.
As well, at least the way I budget, like for our things like gas and fuel and different things we buy, I'm basing it on the 12 months prior.
Yeah.
So, you might not see the change.
Their employees cost money. The insurance for those employees costs money. Everything is just going up and up and up and up and unfortunately, that's where we're at as a customer, as a consumer.
Some of their biggest expenses is mainly the chemicals. Chlorine is number one.
Yeah, we've seen an increase in chemicals.
Chlorine is insanely high.
Double.
Yeah. Ammonia, they use some of the other stuff.
A lot of lagen.
Yeah. Just from the time that I was on there, I mean, the biggest thing that, and I've mentioned this before to a lot of folks, is water is quickly becoming, and that's, it's going to drive the cost up unfortunately. It's, we are, there are a lot more people coming into Texas, a lot more people building and using more and more water and there's only so much to go on. It's getting tough.
Yeah.
So, any other comments on, or questions on the enterprise fund? Okay, so my last screen, these things that we need to look at, we need to be prepared. Elevated storage and possible well site, we're looking at probably 2 million and then a new well worth 500,000, so 2 and 1/2 million. That's down the road. Combining lift stations one and two, these numbers were given to me a year ago, so they could be different. We're looking into some new financial software. To put it bluntly, ours sucks.
Well, and we're piecemealed together. We have more than difference.
I've gotten two price quotes in so far and they're looking so much better than I expected them to be that that may or may not be coming as a supplemental. It looks like we could have so much better software for the same that we're paying now, so I'll be bringing that to you. But if it's not this year, it's going to have to be because the software is probably 1996 level software that we're using. Expected repair at the wastewater treatments are, Cliff, just off the top of his head, said it's probably going to be a quarter million. We don't know.
At least.
At least, yeah. So, those are things that we need to keep in mind as we're budgeting and as we're building reserves. And the impact fees which go into that reserve fund. We build it in the, in the general fund with transfers out of our budget. When we set tax rates, oh, here we won't do them or come 10 years down the road, we are going to be so unprepared. So, we need to keep that going. What do I have to say? Any questions?
You having fun yet?
Always.
Good.
I mean, and I realize I didn't give you the copies of like the fund balances and stuff. If you guys want that, just let me know and I'll email it to you.
Thank you. Thanks for the discussion, Trish.
Thank you. Glad it's all Cliff wanted, one truck, huh? I think he had his truck and mower price mixed up, by the way.
Three.
Last year, we brought you either six or seven supplemental. This year, we may be...
Well, save it. A, discuss and consider adopting ordinance 25-529, amending appendix B, fee schedule of the Ridgewood Code of ordinances to amend permit and utility fees and amend water and wastewater impact fees to align with fees adopted in ordinance 24-518.
This would be me.
Oh, Sal started and then Trish has pulled it because we ended up having a discussion on impact fees. So, when we adopted the impact fee, the ordinance is provided to us by the engineers and it did not include an addition that updates our fee schedule. So, all the ordinance is, the new fees that were adopted in September to the fee schedule just to replace it. While talking to Trish about the ordinance... And just add that to each permit so that each permit is just one price and when a builder or resident come in, they know what they're paying and they're not adding another fee that they weren't expecting. So, I told her that I would add it and present it. So, all the changes here are not increasing any fee. That is not already charged. It is removing the processing fee that's already applied to every permit and including it in. Our permit fees do not pay for staff's time. It pays for the third party that we use for plan review and inspections.
Do we have detail on exactly what the cost is that we're paying that third party entity?
Yes. Like a fee schedule from them?
Yeah, I would like to see...
Now, it does vary based on if they come out for one or two inspections, if one fee, if they do additional fees, those additional... Say it's 150 and I...
I would imagine that their fee schedule would describe that.
Yeah, so when we get a bill, it's not like each inspection is...
Fee schedule from them.
We do have a fee schedule, yes. And that's something that I review every year during budget planning is just to make sure we're covering ourselves.
I'm less worried about covering ourselves. They seem incredibly high to me and I think we're...
For the once a week we get?
From some...
Or whatever it is?
Until we...
When they come in spec?
They come three times a week.
Okay.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Eyes and some neighboring communities, they seem incredibly high to me. So, I think we're far beyond the point of covering our costs and we're treading into revenue generator territory, which I have a, as a matter of principle, I have an issue with because then I have to agree with them most of the time. You should be able to do what you want with your property. It's your property. You already run it from the government via property taxes, so...
So, we, either two or three years ago...
Okay.
So, we, we kind of revamped some of our processes, revamped a little bit on the permit fees. And so then we were pretty much breaking even.
Okay.
You know, it was close, making maybe a few thousand dollars a year on them, but of those fees, we're also paying Marcus. Marcus now does our renter inspections, which used to be done by, it was them, BBT.
Property owner that has a rental only pays 25 annually and it gets them two inspections that would cost us $100 an inspection before, so we were losing.
So, that was a big change when we were able to bring him on, but it is not profit motive. The difference that you will see on the reports now is paying his time. So, we are still, we're still not, be that they would give out the inspector's phone number. You know, the inspectors told us to, here, give them our card and if they have a question then call. Well, they have what's called on-demand inspections. They wouldn't get on our schedule because they would call them direct. That was costing us more money.
We were getting billed but not processing a permit.
So, you know, they were getting their two and three repeats and not paying us. So, we've closed up that loop. So, we're not the highest, but we're high, but we are not making a profit.
I would just like to see the difference.
Okay.
So, for, at least from my perspective, and I know that we have to vote on this, but I would like to see the comparison of the fee schedule for what we're being charged by the third party versus...
Sometimes because she may not have processed the invoice yet, she may not have got it yet for the previous month, so it may look like we paid way less than what we took in.
Right. I realize there's a reconciliation process, but again, that's why I'm asking to see what they charge us versus what we charge.
Yeah.
There's also an addition of a, just going through it, and my apologies, I, let me show you all what I did. On the $100, I crossed it out and did not add the 150 next to it, so I've edited that on my side of it and reprinted it correctly. It's just going to be in the packet as if I'm removing the fee and totaling, and I'm not. We, we looked at what other cities do and it looks like they offer what's called a 14-day temporary cleanout and it just gives them limited access without having to reopen an account, pay a deposit and completely get a full month billing when they're not using a full month's worth of water. So, we are proposing to add a $50 fee which covers half of a base fill. So, it'll cover half of a base fill, which is 1,000 gallons because the 2,000 is in the base fill, and then half of the cost of garbage. Any, they'll sign an agreement that lets them know that any usage in excess of 1,000 gallons within that two-week period will be billed to them at whatever the current rate is. So, right now...
Garbage, does that include heavy haul items?
It would. If it falls between that time legally, I mean, they can't put it out for more than a week ahead of time.
That's why that was, that was my next question. Are we going to only issue these permits to coincide with the first of the month?
We just with the, no, we just split it basically, pay this much, we don't have a different cost for heavy trash. It's all one price that we pay waste connections.
We may have somebody move out the 15th and they want to get it ready for somebody to move in on the 30th.
Yeah, so they're going to put their trash out on the 15th and it's going to sit there until the first.
Well, they'll know when that heavy trash is only the first week.
They're the property owner, so they would still get enforcement if they break ordinance and put out heavy trash ahead of time.
They own their property. It's what our schedule is or they can be told. And then, you know...
It's a slippery slope though because if you start billing, what do you do? Like people sell your house, okay? I close on the 15th and I leave all my big trash out like the...
Right, but even right now, they could pay a deposit and open an account and do the same thing. They just close it in two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
It's the same cost as same issues.
They're doing this now.
They're just having to pay a $100 deposit.
They're having to pay an application fee and a deposit to open an account and then they come in two weeks later and close it. This will alleviate a lot of paperwork and headache for our staff and it accomplishes the same thing.
Because they'll open an account and then to open the new account. This way allows us not to open and close multiple times in the same property.
And we do have it built in that a new tenant cannot open an account unless all previous amounts are paid by the landlord or the previous tenant. So, if they would use, say they, the rental has a pool and they fill the pool, they go over their 1,000 gallons and so we bill them, they have to pay it because otherwise they can't put in another tenant with...
And so, we, and then we also added a burn permit fee. We have been seeing an influx in requests for burning that Marcus goes out and does inspections and make sure that it's safe to burn. So, we were just adding a $10 fee to offset his costs for his time on that.
So, we weren't paying anything for them to be done, but now we have Marcus doing them, so...
Marcus, is it, he's contracted?
He's our code enforcement and fire marshal.
Marcus Martin.
He works.
No, he's a, yeah, he's an employee. We just added more taxes on to him and with that, it had to increase his salary and so we were trying to offset the costs because it was a cost that we incurred to get code enforcement that we didn't necessarily have ways to afford.
Probably three years ago, council really pushed for us to have a code enforcement office.
Right, I remember, that's what I thought.
So, that's who Marcus is. And then he got, he has a history of being a fire chief at Reynolds.
I have a question. Kind of like devil's advocate here on this. So, like I understand the, you had the processing fee and then the permit fee and you kind of put them together. Why charge a processing fee? Are...
So, the permit fees were set based on what we were being billed.
Right.
But our office staff, I would guess, oh, we have more additional costs than just what we are paying to save them.
How was the cost going to us if they're on the payroll?
Well, I mean, it pays for her payroll. Just to put into perspective, labor's officer employee that we need, so we look at ways that we can offset salaries to justify having these employees or to be able to afford to have the employees. So, right now, Katie is doing permitting and it originally, I think, was added because we added a third employee and we now had to...
She does all our permitting. She does all of our court as far as, you know, taking payments and things. She's got a very full plate. Laura backs her up. Laura does accounts payable, utility billing and...
So, our payroll that we spend is not part of the general fund?
It is, and that fee is the general fund.
They are under the general fund and so are the inspection fees.
I guess, so if your payroll, the general fund covers that 150, so why are you trying to...
Because if we didn't, we would have to raise sales or property taxes to cover those costs when her work is being caused or...
Our revenue has to cover our expenses in the general.
Have property taxes somehow.
Have enough revenue in the municipal court to pay a full-time person and we had to lay off a person, which was horrible.
Say for instance, Cliff has five guys...
The revenue goes into the general fund, the general fund funds the payroll.
Yeah. Five guys that work out in public works.
I'm thinking of it differently, like...
We have to make sure we have enough revenue to cover what we're spending.
So, it's like permit fees are generating work for Katie, but the property owner that doesn't pull permits is then going to have to pay it. Do you know what I'm saying?
If we have to increase tax.
The people that are generating the work for Katie are in turn helping pay for that, for her work.
Are you seeing it as like an overtime thing?
Well, I know it's not creating...
In order to complete these new tasks?
Not like that. I think the perception is, okay, well, if I pay taxes, right, then my property tax goes to pay for city employees or whatever, right?
The city budget, right.
They pay, property taxes is a good sum.
If that's paying for the employee, then why am I paying?
Property taxes...
It's being offset by the work that's generated from permits and not every property owner is generating permits.
Right. That other 30% has to come from sales tax, fees we charge or we get some franchise taxes, court fines, things like that. So, we have to make sure that that total revenue covers our total expenditures plus enough to put in, to build up some reserves so that we can afford to have a million dollars worth of debris. So, the $50 processing fee was put in before I came and it was actually four years ago, we realized it was in there and not being charged. That was part of the problem when our expenditures for permits was more than our receipts for permits and inspections.
What's the total in just processing fees? I would like to see that.
But anyway, so the, that was one of the reasons we weren't making back what permits and inspections were costing us that I found, so... And then with the burn permit, you know, we had volunteers doing it. They're full-time workers on top of being volunteer fire department and so the burn permits might take a week or two for them to get around there. In the meantime, we have people calling, can I get, can I burn? Can I burn? Marcus gets it now, he's out there, you know, so they're getting better customer service as well, and ten dollars to burn a big pile of whatever, you know. So, so we don't want, again, all of the city paying for the burning of just part of us. That's a, a big thing with me, is I want the people that don't incur things to not have to pay for them so much.
So, I would like to make a motion, but to discuss the first part of item A at the next meeting further, once we get the comparison of what we're being charged versus what we charged, and looking at the total of the processing fees, how.
Can we, suggestion, can we workshop this ordinance and amend it during the meeting?
The first ordinance, right?
The way you want it to read, which I would at least ask that we do the impact fees, just because that is a question.
That's fine, we've already voted on that.
Everything up to impact fees, unless you are good with leaving the cleanout, that's the only other thing that.
The cleanout and the burn.
Well, that, then we can talk about it, however you want.
I'm fine with leaving the cleanout, I just need to know how I, need to craft the motion, I, I mean, obviously, I'm only one person, so they may not even agree with me.
Make a motion to adopt the.
And then you can motion to adopt this ordinance as amended, do you know what I mean? So I'm gonna remove it so we're, so what you want.
Wanna see if there's any further public comment on this issue?
That, no, that's why I asked then, because I don't know if I need to do it now, or if I need to wait, that's why I asked, how do I need to go about it? I'll, I'll do that when the time comes.
Is anybody that wishes to speak on behalf of this?
On impact fees?
On impact fees.
No, well, the.
Permit fees.
On the permits?
Oh, sorry.
Please come up to the podium, I think, don't mind.
My name is Martin Brodegas, and I build homes in Oakwood Shores, and, but basically.
Are you a resident of Richwood?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
So, I'm trying to be, but, but anyway, so, impact fees are basically, I guess, relatively ten thousand dollars for a new permit. So to me, I'd rather let my lot sit there for the next ten years, and I own seven lots in Oakwood Shores, and I'd rather let them sit there and then build on them, I mean, at that point, because it's not convenient for me, Clute, or, you know, Lake Jackson, charges me twenty-five hundred dollars for a permit, and then I come to Richwood and it's thirteen thousand five hundred, fourteen thousand dollars, so, you know, to me, last year before, we were just getting charged five thousand dollars on impact fees, and that was already kinda steep, but then to come back and say ten thousand dollars on impact fees, you know, that just seems kinda, in my opinion, ridiculous, and it makes me not wanna sit there for, you know, but that's just my.
What, what specific impact issue, well, there's no sewage, it's just water, yeah.
I don't have an attorney here to help out, but water and wastewater impact fees were adopted in September.
Of last year.
And last month, we held a public hearing to rediscuss those fees, so this discussion is just cleanup, like it's, we cannot change these fees.
That's not what this meeting is for.
I live in, right now in Richwood, I live in Lake Jackson, so it's kinda hard to keep up with Lake Jackson, Clute, Anderson, you know, what everybody's doing so, at one time, so, especially, they're like, well, you know, and I, I have nothing against the girls up there, they're like, well, you should, you know, try to look at at least once a month what, what the meeting's gonna be about, but, you know, it's.
I mean, we notice it through the newspaper, the website, and public postings, that, that's the only way we can notify people, there's no way for me to know that you specifically wanna know about this thing, if I had to keep up with that, I would have to contact hundreds of people every month.
No, 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 and I understand, like I said, it just seems, since we're not using, I'm okay with, let's say, the sewer fee, I mean, the water fee, because.
Oakwood Shores.
So then the fee will stay at five thousand dollars, or will it stay?
There's no fee for sewer and impact fees in Oakwood Shores.
For water, what, what the impact?
It depends on the size of meter you have.
It's not anymore.
It's not a, a whole fee, three quarters, one charge, one base for that.
Oh, so, so the, that's what I'm getting at, ninety-seven hundred.
Right, it's two separate fees.
Ninety-seven hundred dollars for a meter seems kind of.
Do you understand what the purpose of an impact?
I would say, or from what I read, you know, online, because I, I did try to read about what it is, it's for the city to recoup on what it's, on what it had to waste to get, on the money it had to invest to get the property up to, you know, to get water out there.
That's incorrect.
It's for future impact.
It's for, it's because you are contributing to water services or wastewater treatment.
For future, right, so wouldn't it be more beneficial if we, if Richwood has more houses, like, for instance, I'm just one person, right, but Oliver, I know he has another four or five properties out there, so wouldn't it be more beneficial if you charged taxes on those houses than if you, if we hold on to the properties and we never build on them?
I think it's also, correct me if I'm wrong, Trish, but the money that you can use to pay for water infrastructure is different than taxes, right?
Yes, it doesn't come from taxes, it comes from our water rates and our impact fees.
Yeah, so granted, and, and I know, it took me a while to learn that too, so, you know, you go, oh, for water infrastructure, it's, there's legalities and state stuff that goes into that, so that's where we look at it and say, okay, well, in order to have money to, to do the water infrastructure, you have to have the, the impact fee.
Or maybe, yeah, because the way I, I see it, right, from my opinion, and everybody has their own opinion, a water well.
Right back to, but it's not on a regular.
So we re-review impact fees every five years. Yeah, but, like she was saying, we, we held the public hearing and meetings in September, and then held another one last month, and no one came.
I got it back on the agenda, and I had no, no one here for it, so.
The only reason I ask, I would keep up with that, you know, I mean, we all work, I mean, we have family.
We all work as well, we all work as well.
This is the reason why I have, it's, it's in the past, I, I, I got it back on the agenda, because I live out there too. I told, that's all I can say, I tried to get this back.
We've let this go on long enough, it's, this is not legal for them to continue speaking.
Yes, we have to, continue on with our meeting.
No, no, that's fine, I understand.
We appreciate you.
But thank you for your.
No, I, I feel.
You were talking about permit fees, this is not, this is a, the permit fees and impact fees are separate.
I talked to one of them, and I said they could come speak in public comment.
Right.
I'm, I'm supposed to be at work right now, I'm losing money, yes, yes, for being here.
But the permit fee is the only fee that we can change at this moment, impact fees we cannot change.
I understand that, I went to, I went to Clute, I went to Lake Jackson, and Anderson, and for the same health, same property, same square footage, I thought, I thought, I asked them the same question, how much would it cost me to build a house here, in you, in, in this side of town? And they all, the, the most expensive, it was twenty-seven hundred, twenty-seven hundred dollars, and I got from four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars more, five hundred percent of sorry, we paying the, I mean, what, when, when are we getting any help from the government, the city of Richwood, we don't get anything other than citizens? I mean, because we, I said, yes, I'm, we paying high taxes, and then all this impact fee, especially for new construction.
I, I live out there with you guys, okay, I'd rather have a well than pay ten thousand dollars, be tapped in, but I had no support, so we have to live with what council voted on, guys, that's all I can say. Council voted on this, it sticks for five years, okay, that's all I have to say on there.
And I understand what you said earlier, I mean, council even is growing up, but.
No, I didn't say that, I, I'm trying to keep it plateaued or going down, because I wanna see more money in residents. We have to roll with it, this is what council voted on, not me, okay? They need your support, council does what the citizens want, I can't do it myself, council's not gonna do it yourself, it takes a majority vote, so here we are, guys, that's all I can say on this.
When is the next meeting, when we get?
Five years.
Five years from now. This is why you, we need to be proactive in the community.
On top of public notices, but I, we do everything legally that we are required to, and then some to notice people on this, I don't know how else to make sure people know that.
People like me and Oliver that are, they're trying.
I know, but I live in a city, and I have to stay up to date on my thing.
We have two jobs, right, like, I work during the day at the plant, he works at night at the plant, so it's, it's kinda hard to build.
My own company as well, but we have to be proactive, if you wanna take measures in your neighborhood, watch out for notifications, guys, that's all I can say.
Our meeting is the second Monday of every month, except this month, we postponed it a week because of illness, but if you get in the habit of looking at our agenda, it's posted the Friday before on our website.
Kirsten takes care of that.
On the front of the building.
Every week before.
And last month was in the newspaper, and the one in September was in the paper, and we held two meetings on that, we had a one hearing, and then we had a second hearing in August and September.
Now's not the time, that's all I can say.
Well, you can come voice your opinion anytime, you fill, you fill out that public, you get three minutes. Public comment, and at the beginning of the meeting, you can come up and voice your opinion about anything you want for three minutes.
That's it, there's nothing we can do. You're good. We like to hear from people, that's all.
Okay, so I gotta think on the permits, could we check to see if maybe hiring an inspector locally? Because, and I, and I, I mean this out of like respect, I have nothing against the people from, that come down from.
From Houston.
From Houston, but sometimes the people that live in your area, that wanna do everything extremely, and they're more difficult to work with than somebody that you've known for you.
We need to follow all the laws, but if you have any suggestions, please email somebody at the council, or Eric or Kirsten, and we'd be more than happy to look at this.
You know, that, that was my suggestion, that maybe bringing like the inspector from Clute, not necessarily hiring him, but, you know, or from Lake Jackson, instead of, that way we can have an inspector. Virtual inspection, but it's just easier for me to have the inspector and him talk to me and point at what I need to do than him trying to look over the phone and trying to explain to me what I need to do.
I agree.
That, that was it, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Please bring them your suggestions to us. Now it's your turn.
Okay.
So I've amended, if you wanna review it?
I trust you, it's okay.
I said, I've removed everything permitting-wise.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five five-two-nine as amended in this meeting, and we will discuss the fees.
One second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect the motion through. Okay, moving on to B, discuss and consider approval of resolution twenty-five dash R dash ninety-eight, permitting the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five CCPD budget to allow unbudgeted expenditures.
We received an email from the vendor that we bought a truck from in twenty-twenty-three, saying we had never paid for, up, give me the invoice and I'll look at it, so she did, and it, I looked up the invoice number, and I'm like, no, we paid it, so no, you didn't, yeah, we did, so then she said, no, you paid for the vehicle, you didn't pay for the outfit, so this was the truck we got in December of twenty-three, we didn't pay, and then they contacted me in May of twenty-five, saying we didn't pay this other invoice that we never got, we didn't get the truck till, I don't know, I mean, it was crazy, it was just, so anyway, we had to pay it, we, we investigated, and we had not paid for the outfit, so this was money that was approved for the twenty fiscal year, no, I'm off year, it was approved in the twenty-three fiscal year. Supply issues made it, so we had to move all the purchases for vehicles to the twenty-four fiscal year. We thought they were paid, and then we get another invoice, so this money was approved in twenty-four, but it, or on the other, so that's the seventy thousand.
I have a question, when we purchase items like this, like non-credit card transactions, is it done via purchase order? Do those purchase orders dictate procurement terms, like?
And with the confusion of it being from one year to the next anyway, it didn't jump out to me that we hadn't paid at all after we got the invoice five months after we purchased it.
Yeah.
So it just, you know, I take responsibility as well, but we just, we didn't know, and then, so, talked to chief, and we verified that we had not paid that, so that's the seventy thousand, so it's money that was approved in twenty-three that was then moved to twenty-four, and now I wanna move it to twenty-five.
Who did we purchase that from?
That, the outfitting is Sid and Morton's.
No, it was all Caldwell.
But it sounds like it's that.
They paid for everything, so we paid the purchase, the truck, through Caldwell, but Caldwell also cut the check to Sid and Morton's.
So they cut the check for the outfitting?
But they didn't bill us.
For the outfitting, not the vehicle?
So we, we bought the vehicle in December of twenty-three.
Okay.
We kept bugging the vehicle, but then we just, two weeks ago, got notified we'd never paid for the outfit, because we, they'd forgotten to invoice us.
Okay, are we continuing to use them?
Hope not.
Not, I hope not.
How do we choose them, all the way in Caldwell, there's a thousand?
Like the state, if you use Bible.
Or we've got to do sealed bids.
Okay.
So.
And I, I, I'm gonna jump right in here, I've bought vehicles from them for twenty years, never had an issue, until.
So, and it took us.
It just concerns me when there's a budgetary impact, if you don't know how to do your books well enough over a twenty-four month period to invoice some money for a whole vehicle.
That's your limitations on that.
Come on.
And I don't know how many months it took us to get the title.
Well, that's why I asked about the procurement terms, is it possible to government, that there is a maximum amount of time that you have to invoice, or there's no payment?
That I'm aware of legally.
I'm writing it in there now.
I can tell you that it's from a private sector, that.
And the P, yeah, you know, redid it in twenty-four, so anyway, that was presented to CCPD last week at their meeting, and they approved it, this is CCPD money, so, and then ten thousand for the purchase of MDTs.
CCPD at, not our last meeting, but the meeting before last authorized fifteen thousand dollars for ticket riders, and during the process of, we have the ticket riders, and during the process of acquiring the ticket riders, the company who is sole source for these particular MDTs, so that we could get a group rate or a special rate if we purchase both the ticket riders and the MDTs, ticket riders, so last week I met with them again and asked them for additional funds as an amendment to this year's budget, so we can get the MDTs and the ticket riders together and capitalize on the savings.
Okay.
And then the other is four thousand for the?
Does multiple things, its primary function, the one that I'm most interested in, is policy management.
What is DMS, document management system?
Yes.
Okay.
And, so it does policy management, it'll do background investigations, it does IA, internal affairs cases, tracking, it does report form tracking, like, usually, it's the, the initial cost that I was quoted was thirteen thousand dollars a year, but I've been in negotiations with power DMS for a while, and their most recent offer, I think they, they thought I was gonna bail on a whole deal, percent discount, where instead of thirteen thousand, it's like twenty-six hundred dollars we pay, and in the third year, we'll pay the full thirteen thousand, so I presented that to CCPD last week, and they authorized the expenditure.
Is there a contract term, or whatever?
Right.
Okay.
It helps you guys out tremendously?
It will help, yes, absolutely, it'll, it also has a scheduling module that will really help the supervisors, you know, being as small as an app, where the supervisors, as soon as they learn about a scheduling issue, they can send out a mass notification to all the officers, saying I have a shift that's opened up, and I need coverage, and allow the officers to respond on the app, so it has several different features, the one I like the most is the policy, you know, by my own policy manual, every year I'm supposed to reevaluate the policies and make sure that they're up to date with best practices, and help me with that, it's immeasurable.
Okay.
So the total, we're asking to increase fiscal year twenty-five appropriations is eighty-four thousand, as I said, this was approved by the CCPD board on, so they have approved it, and it's really just kinda a rubber stamp.
We're just transferring money, right, this is already earmarked from the sales tax percentage, right?
I mean, all the sales tax thing that goes in there, it just decreases their fund balance, and they have. I mean, all the sales tax thing that goes in there, it just decreases their fund balance, and they have to.
Okay.
Making mention to approve resolution 25-R-98 permitting the fiscal year '24-'25 CCPD budget to allow for the unbudgeted expenditure.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Let the record reflect the motion carries. So time is now 7:32, and we will break for executive session.
Forty-nine, and we will resume the meeting. Don't believe there's any action to be taken from executive session to bring it. Yeah, that's why I missed the top as much. Thank you. Okay. All right, capital improvement projects update. Cliff?
Our project is completely closed out now.
The what? Which one?
Construction proceeding. Water main installation, storm sewer substantially complete. We've awarded the Cypress Misty Court improvement. Their steering is waiting on the signed construction contracts from Matula, and we'll progress on that. Parks master plan. The streets master plan. We are coming close to the completion of that plan. We're having a meeting tomorrow with Jared Engel key to him up to five points. And the CDVG water main replacement, the survey for that will be complete in the next couple of weeks, and design will start. That's all I had to want.
That's it?
That's it.
What was that? Like two minutes?
About even.
Thank you, Cliff. All right, city manager's report.
Mayor, councillor, I've got everything on there from Friday and don't have anything new to add. Thank you very much.
Council member comments and reports?
Oh, I'll just say, you know, it's just that time of the year, everybody's out for summer. Be safe, especially if you're going out to the beach and stuff. Be cautious, watch where you park your vehicles. The water comes up fast. You know, just be safe, even with all the other people out there drinking, driving, everything else going on.
Okay, thank you. Jerry?
Not too much, I'd say. Just summertime, it's hot. My safety thing this month was stay hydrated, so.
We did have a turnout by KRB this last weekend, even in the rain, so appreciate KRB.
It's been kind of quiet.
All right. I don't have anything, like what Will said, it's summertime, so hopefully everybody's enjoying their summer, getting a little break and having fun entertaining the kiddos between their boredom and hunger. I'm sure that that's a rotating complaint that parents get all day long while they're at work, so. Yeah, that's it. July 5th, I don't, what time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock at Ellis Park. Nothing gives planning. It was a little bit later notice this year. The girls up front not available. I'm still trying to find out how many of my people are available.